Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:01. We are very fortunate not to have an executive session tonight, so we'll get right to roll call. Stuart Lander?
Here.
Brad Shear?
Here.
Hey, Basanani?
Here.
Michelle Brusso?
Here.
James Resivo?
Here.
And I, Carol Veteran, here. Unfortunately, Paula Whitford could not be with us tonight. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, next up on the agenda is comments from the community, so I'm going to turn that over to James.
We had no one sign the form on the way in, but if anyone is, anyone wants to speak, something people hear, so.
All right, that'll bring us to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd actually like to make a motion to remove item A and table item A from the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. Next up is the superintendent report. I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee, members of the public. In this week's with my report for this meeting deals primarily or entirely with the opening of schools in your packet and updated onto board docs. We have, we first start with the welcome back or the opening of schools with the adults and the professional development day. As stated at the last meeting, the session was kicked off by a district-wide session by all bargaining unit members as well as administration from central and central office staff for exploring autism, a deep dive. A fantastic presentation by Ariana De Angelis from the Autism Project. In your pack, oh, it's up on the screen. Thank you. Next slide, please. I didn't see it up there before. So in the graphic below is some of the, or some of the many glowing accolades that people had put into our professional development feedback form about this session. And so obviously autism and presentation came up the most as it was the most frequent. And so those words are the largest in this word wall, if you will. But again, as someone who also presented, I would love to see any of these adjectives in my, any of my presentations, really great, impactful, relevant, informative, helpful, and everything that we had hoped for. Next slide, please. And then the day continued. Here's the feedback on the locally generated sessions that were facilitated by members of the faculty and staff and put together facilitated by members of the faculty and staff and put together in alignment with the recommendations of the equity audit through the professional development subcommittee. So again, having that students in the center and being the largest one is obviously something that we'd love to see. But again, helpful, informative, enjoyed, useful, impactful, valuable, engaging to describe the sessions. It was again, a successful opening, I would say, from the adults' perspective. Next slide, please. Then, as you all know, we had, the first day of school was a transition day. The state law allows for those students who are entering a new building for the first time. And so for us, that is grades kindergarten, six and nine. To have that be the first day of school and count towards the 180-day total for the entire district. Because kindergarten, this is their first foray for the most part, or for the vast majority into their buildings and routines of school in general, their day was filled with being introduced to their teachers, the building fixtures, the classroom fixtures, daily routines and building routines. And the feedback that I had received from, from teachers and some of the parents that I, and as well as staff was that they weren't sure, they went in a little skeptical. However, having students in the building for the first time with no pressure, without the distractions of a new building, new teachers breaking away from parents potentially for the first time, that we could put all of our attention towards those students in kindergarten was something that was well worth the efforts. Obviously, in sixth and ninth grade, the vast majority of students, unless they've moved here or transferred in for the first time, this is not their first foray or coming in from homeschool, this is not the majority's first foray into education. So their day was filled with also getting introduced to their teachers and routines. But I would also like to thank all of the faculty and staff who took it upon themselves to organize themselves either by grade level teams or by departments in order to engage those students. So this was not just the sixth grade teachers, it was not just the ninth grade teachers engaging in these activities. And there you see a snapshot of, again, that personalization, that building on relationships that is fundamental to having all of our students thrive here in South Kingston. Next slide, please. So I'm bringing forward our beginning of the year enrollment. We are still, we have outreach to various families or students who may not have shown up for the first few days. Those are reflected in these numbers. I would like to highlight that last year, and if this is a word of caution as we proceed into this school year and into next, is that as much as we like NESDEC predictions or projections, they are just that, they are projections. I am pleased to report that while though we are, we do have less students than the end of last school year, which was expected, we currently have 40 more students in the district who showed up and are showing up that are attending our schools. This does not account for our out-of-district enrollment, of which we have 90 students currently signed up for CTE, 136 attending charters and 10 attending state schools. This is, this will be something that we will be tracking on a monthly basis, and I will report out once again, once we have the October 1st official enrollment date, as that is what RIDE bases most funding formulas off of. Are there any questions?
I, I have a question. If you could, it would be nice to know where those 40 students sit. What, if they're
They are, yup, they're primarily in high school.
Okay.
Yeah, so we've, we've we've lost a pro, or have a decline of approximately, well, I can break that down.
So what I was gonna, my question is really an ask for the next time is it would be nice to see last year to this year, and I don't want this to be a rolling every week.
Yeah.
Or every other week. It would just be nice to see where we left to where we are. And especially around the CTE 90, because 90, to me, that's a flat number. We've seen that significantly higher in the past. So I'm, I'm actually glad to see that, but I would like to actually see the data that shows that. And again, I'm not requesting this for every meeting. I'm just, when we do present these, it would be nice to have like the previous years with it.
Understood.
Thank you.
And actually, that, the ironic piece is, is that, that's what I originally had. I had the end of year last year, the beginning of the year this year, but then I said, wait, are those, that's, these are two different school years. And so, but, so I can get that. I'll put that in my update to the school.
Perfect, thank you.
So could you also, just for the next meeting, show historically how many students we've lost from eighth grade to ninth grade? So ending eighth grade last year to beginning ninth grade this year, because that's when we lose the students to CTEs, also to private schools and other areas. But I think I kind of get a sense from looking at these numbers that we're leveling out maybe, but I'd really like to see that maybe as a graphic, like the last few years, how many we've lost eighth to ninth grade. So we get a better sense of, you know, if we're doing better, then that's something to know and to celebrate and find out, you know, how, you know, just keep working at it to get that number down as low as possible.
So I will say that I believe last year, our grade eight class was 185. And so we would typically expect it, you know, or usually, I always expect a 10% at the very least. And so with those numbers now, I can't say that we didn't have that 10% and we didn't have people moving in or coming back from private schools or from charter schools. So I, you know, I'll need, I'll need to dig a little bit to go to figure out how many were at Broad Rock who may have left versus how many came back or came in, so. But I believe last year's eighth grade was 185.
Yeah, I'm excited to see the 176th or ninth grade. Like I said, I feel like it's a really good thing, but just to see the numbers would be great.
Will do.
When you first presented this slide, you commented about reaching out to some families that may have just not come for the first week. Is there any information from that that you can share about what you discovered? They're coming, they couldn't come last week, or they're, they're gone, or?
I, the, the numbers were minimal.
Okay.
So we're, we're talking, we're talking single digits.
Okay.
Even here, even here at the high school. So very few in terms of the outreach, it, the, we had everything from, well, I don't want to give into the reasons considering they're in the single digits, and if they don't return, I don't want to speak to, speak to those reasons.
That's fine.
Yup.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
If I may, I did pull up the enrollment numbers from one of our earlier school meeting meetings in June. The number you had on there was a grade eight, 184. So 185 is pretty close, but that means drop of, how much is that? Six, nine students, sorry. Yeah, eight students, a drop of eight students. We don't know the composition of, of, you know, like Mr. Jaws was saying, we don't know who came in. But just want to point that out that we have that number from a June meeting.
Thank you. Not seeing any other questions. Next slide, please. So the beginning of the year went very smoothly. However, we're always trying to refine, obviously, here at the high school. A point of emphasis both with the community and here in our meetings is going to be the high school traffic patterns. Dr. McGair gave me a call this morning with great news in terms of hearing, or he said that the the traffic pattern and this getting students in as well as unloading buses and getting them on their way was the best that it's been. And so he was very encouraged by the recent work that's been going on. We do have a potential that we may need to add another bus for afternoon athletics currently. As one of the buses is slated to go make a drop-off and then go to Broad Rock, and so far that's proven to not be as successful. So we're looking at the potential to add a bus just for the fall season in order to get student athletes to their practice facilities. Also, as I, as some may know, is that there was a little rollover glitch in terms of charging for breakfast and lunch. I would highlight that no students were denied breakfast or lunch by the, by our food service staff. And my understanding is, is that that should have, this, as of this afternoon, they believed they had fixed it. But we're still waiting to hear from Chartwells to see how the final end of the day rollover went. But when we went through our side of the data and the rollover, we did not receive any error messages. And so we were, we are optimistic that that is getting taken care of. And then, as was posted on this agenda, our live streaming and recordings of the school committee meetings, we are working through some of the changes of policies between Zoom, Google Apps for Education and YouTube. And so we are still looking and at solutions for that. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Before going to the next slide, I don't mean to go back a slide.
Yes.
But I'm still learning.
That's okay.
And I'm trying to understand, I looked at, if you go back to the enrollment, the number of fifth graders to the number of sixth graders goes up quite significantly by like 40 students. So what is that attributed to? I understand part of it has to do with charter schools only going through fifth.
Yes.
So we know, is there, are there other reasons for that?
Not that I can speak to this evening. My assumption, my, my assumption off the top of my head right now is is that charter bump in terms of ending at the middle school years, but I can't say so with any certainty at this time.
So I have two questions. You do not have to go back to the slide. I'm curious with the high school transition day, I saw it talked about the yonder bags. I'm curious what the other schools are, is it the high school is the only one that is, is doing the yonder bags, or is it all the schools?
No, the, 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 the middle school also does them. It was just that that was a point of emphasis that they gave on that day.
Okay.
Because while issuing laptops, they included the yonder bags. And so when I asked Dr. McGair for some activities and highlights, that was
Got it. Perfect. Thank you for that. And then my last question is about the live streaming of our meetings. Clearly, we're not live streaming, but I'm assuming, are we recording, saving and posting?
That is, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So just a clarification, please.
Please.
While the the my school bucks issues get straightened out, any student without I'm trying to make sure that I word this respectfully. Any student that comes without money for lunch and they don't have money in their account, they're not getting like peanut butter sandwich or cheese. They're getting the regular.
Yes.
Okay.
Our free and reduced rosters are up to date, and that I heard is also working in terms of the, the submission of paperwork in order to document, but essentially the, basically a ledger is being kept of what students purchased on those days and their accounts will be updated.
Okay, just want to make sure that they're given the same lunch as every other. Thank you.
I had a question, Brown, keen off the live streaming part of it. I think it's very important for a community to have access to the meeting at the time that's happening. So do we have a timeline and when we're going to be able to livestream again? Is that something that could we, could we say like by the next meeting, we're going to be able to livestream again? Or like, what are the, I guess, what are the obstacles to doing that?
So I need to meet with Mr. Snow because we, we so essentially, it's a matter of keeping this same, keeping the system that we currently have and getting it to a point that so what we have right now and what we're is vastly more expensive and, and was unbudgeted for than some of the other alternatives that we could take in terms of, so, you know, here we, could we reconfigure a space? Could we hold this meeting in a different and use different technology? Or do we, you know, do we need to have singular microphones with people turning them on and off? We're seeing what other communities are doing and the price points of that, as well as, I believe, it's also terms of service because our Zoom accounts are educational-based, that then having educational-based accounts and then being able to post to YouTube with those, that's becoming difficult. And so we're connecting with other districts and finding that other districts are using town accounts, having collaboration and then using the town account to film their public meeting, and then they haven't had that issue. So we are certainly going to, we're certainly going to try, but we want to make sure that we make the best use of, of the materials and things that we do have. And so I don't want to, I don't want to overpromise. But it is certainly something that we will shoot for.
So I just have a couple of things. As one of, one of the reasons I'm interested in seeing the data from the eighth to ninth grade is because I think that our middle schoolers are very excited about the new high school building, and that might be one of the reasons that we've got ninth grade retention. So I just wanted to let you know kind of why I'd really like to see that. The second thing is, I am so glad that the K sixth grade and ninth grade day went so well. And I'd really like to explore the possibility of doing it again next year, but I know we are going to have a really tight calendar. But I, I think it is such a great start for those grades to have that day by themselves in the building. So I'd like to really think about that and be thoughtful when we look at the calendar for next year.
Because it, I'm optimistic that we can have it again, even in light of the challenges that we're expecting in next year's calendar, given that it does count towards all students 180 days. If for some reason it didn't and we needed to make that up somewhere, then I would be, then that I would be hesitant to, to say so.
I know that's not a motion, but I second that. It's an emo.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, we're gonna start doing the, I've won the sandbox, I teams. Who ate the sandbox, sorry? Actually, and just, okay, so actually, I believe that in terms of changes from end of year for last year to this year, our pre-K numbers last year are down by currently one. Our change for K through five is 43 in the, negative 43, or a loss of 43. In grades six through eight, we have a loss of three. Where in grades nine through 12, we have an increase of 20 based off of the end of last school year for a total difference at the end of last school year since my last report, where we were of a loss of 27 students. And again, I would highlight that that is 40. We're actually, so we're, again, compared to NESDEC, NESDEC thought we would be, would have lost another 40 students, which we currently and optimistically Again, compared to Nezdek, Nezdek thought we would be, would have lost another forty students, which we currently and optimistically Would have not and will not.
I'm sorry, Mr. Badraza, but what was the decrease in the pre-K?
As of right now, or it was, or when I did the, my spreadsheet, it was just one. So we had sixty-five and we currently have sixty-four. You're welcome. And I'll, I, I will get that to you, those numbers to you in a visual format at the end of the week. And that concludes my report.
I'm sorry, I have one more question. Um, our pre-K students Are, um, Many of them are targeted to be In there because of their IEP or, or Their Support that they, that they need. Do we also have community members that do not fall into that category?
Yes, so we do have peer models in that for our students, both who have IEPs and or who may be in for early intervention.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion to accept the superintendent report.
Good motion to accept the superintendent's report.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 That motion passes. All right, so Yes, we have next up discussion action submits schematic designed to ride for the Partial demolition of Curtis Corner Middle School. And we have Phil with us tonight.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to be back. It's been a while. A lot's happened and there's a lot more to come, so it's all good. So I have a brief agenda for you this evening. I will give you You have a packet in front of you with the presentation too, so We can continue along until Technology catches up. No worries. So I want to give you the current Update on Curtis Corner, the athletic fields. Our strategy and why we're proposing to do a partial building demolition. And then of course, answer any questions you may have. So the concept for the athletic fields at Curtis Corner is an ongoing effort. It, it's a balance because we want to maximize the amount of work we're able to do with the funding that is available. So it is lagging the new high school building so that we can recognize any savings from that high school and Bring it to Curtis Corner if the District and the folks involves, involve, agree with that. There's a separate budget for Curtis Corner. That's what we're working towards. But we want to have some flexibility. So the first step at Curtis Corner is to demolish the existing building. And We have a preliminary demolition start date of around February twenty twenty-six. And then a preliminary athletic field start in the summer and fall of twenty twenty-six. So we can go to the next slide. And the next slide. This is just an existing aerial of Curtis Corner, just to familiarize yourself with the site. And I'll present in the next slide, just some concepts and, and thinking behind What we want to do at Curtis Corner, next slide. So the project is going to include track and field improvements, site improvements. We want to improve those existing restrooms, bring in new bleachers. Obviously demo part of the building, but there are some good bones there. And we're going to talk about the strategy of keeping that. In general, the area that is in blue is a part of the building that we want to retain for future use. And the remaining part of the building to be demolished is in the orange. Now, it's important to understand that the extent of occupancy Of what will be remaining is going to vary depending upon how much Funding is available and the scope of work That can occur within that space. The next slide Sort of documents our strategy behind why we would want to keep part of this building. One is to future proof. We want to maintain as many opportunities as we can At the Curtis Corner Athletic Fields for additional fieldhouse, additional Facilities to support the athletics. Again, it's a balance between maximizing those improvements with available funding. Whether that is now or in the future, we want this building to be able to expand when funding allows. And our goal is really to limit disruption to the existing site. And to have this building complement the complete site design When we're done, which could be Certainly for the field in a few years, but with this finish of the rest of the building could be a couple of years more or sooner. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have. We do want to submit this to RIDE so we can Go through the process that this is the first of a number of steps. I will be here many more times talking not only about the building demolition, but also about the greater Concept that Curtis Corner for the athletic fields as well.
So I'm trying to look at the existing building And compare it to what's planned. And it looks like there's like The road is going to be redone, the existing road is, is going to be moved. Is that correct?
That's our initial concept, yes.
Okay, so this, this isn't finalized.
No, it is not finalized. And, and to be Perfectly clear, we're here just to talk about the partial demolition of the building. That's all.
Okay, that, that's good. I just wanted.
Yep, as I mentioned, there are many more times to talk about the complete Curtis Corner Athletic Field Design.
Okay, so I had heard something about the reasons that we need to keep part of this building is for utilities. Is that correct?
That, that's partially correct, yes. But based on our assessment, looking at the buildings, keeping from point A to B, for example, it's logical. It's It has spaces that you could see, this could be a weight room, this could be a training room. This could be a locker room. So we wanted to keep that L shape. Yes, there's a utility component, but that is not the only reason why.
So, and I know you don't have any design work done yet, but Is it conceived, you're going to take this space and make it safe and, and utilize it? Will you add on to that space in any way? Or is this defined space going to be just that space?
Our intent right now is just to keep that space, make it safe, demolish what's around it, close it back in. And Continue with the design as it evolves and align it with available funding and other You know, resources or other ideas that The school department may have for this building component.
Thank you. That is very helpful.
So is this You, you talked about potentially having excess funding from the, if, if the high school comes in under budget, could we do something more at this site? So is it, is it possible based on the submissions we've made to RIDE or some of that funding, if there's enough to go to Renovating the interior of this building? Or would that be a separate? Some, because we submitted to RIDE that some of those funding could go to Other buildings, but I wasn't sure if this building's included because the plan was to demolish it completely.
So there are, without getting overly complicated about the MOA, there's a budget for the new school building. There's a budget For the Curtis Corner Athletic Fields. We're working within both of those budgets accordingly. And it will be at the school department's You know, discretion on how additional savings, if any, are allocated towards other projects. And that means you may in the future go back to RIDE to just readjust some numbers, but that is not uncommon. And it typically happens on all major projects.
And someone mentioned utilities, but are there, what about things like HVAC and Water is that, are there isolated systems to this area or with the renovation of that Saved piece be? I have to include.
Yeah, for the, for the most part, there are, there's reasons why we get portions of that L because that's where there's maybe some Major electrical equipment. So we can keep that portion active or water or sewer, et cetera. So that, that will be factored into this overall Curtis Corner Athletic Campus Plan.
Mr. Conti, there's been some Rumbling Mostly from some naysayers in the community. So I'd just like you to repeat something on the funding. You know, the, I've had the question asked of me and I've seen the question asked. Who's going to pay for this? So my question is, can you give us Some additional details about I know there's certain things that can't be reimbursed from RIDE Related to athletics. So can you, can you just kind of give like a general idea about What of this Curtis Corner project is eligible for reimbursements?
So right now I'm, I'm not aware of anything that is not eligible reimbursement.
I'm, I'm glad you said that, you know, we'll repeat that for the listening audience. And when you say that we're going to use savings from The high school project, that is if The high school project comes in under budget That is Reserved money can be used for the, this work at Curtis Corner.
So it, it will be used as you all deem Necessary and how you determine that component.
But that's your thought. Oh, never, never mind, never, never, never mind.
I'll step in. It's not Phil's thought.
No, it's.
It's, it is, it is an opportunity if the Elected officials at the town level and at the school level Want to make those decisions, but it is not, it's, it's not our decision, it's not the project team decision. It's if we as a community want to, want to do that, or to Brad's point, if we have Money left over, does that go to debt service? Does that go to a different building that's in our list of things? So it's, it's up for discussion. And, and no decisions have been made. No decisions have been made. Make that very clear. And to kind of repeat, this is all part of Our original bond. This is all part of, it's all, it's all reimbursable. They've made, they've made sure that They've not gone rogue on any area, gone with, you know, wants, this is all needs and, and Again, future proofing, because at some point we're going to want a fieldhouse. It will not be, I will not be the chair of that building committee. It will be someone else who will run that project. But so just, but I, I, yeah. But so to, to Phil's point, what he's doing is setting us up as one of the previous bullet sizes, future proofing the site so that In the future, people can make other decisions around it. And also I want to keep in mind that there are some opportunities in the town. Right? So the town also may have Ideas, projects, just like what they're doing at Old Mountain Field right now, right? So there are different, in the future, there could be different opportunities that arise. So Make that very clear.
That's true, but we could leverage anything for the schools because of the reimbursable amount. So just want to put that out there too. It's always good to leverage those funds.
So thank you, Ms. Massenanti, because That took care of all those questions that I, that I've been asked. And I heard That your position as the chair of the building committee was a lifetime appointment.
What is, Bill? What, what is the projected savings by doing that? By keeping that Piece, that L piece? Is there Something on paper you guys have put down?
I, I would say any savings would be recognized in the future as not having to rebuild a significant Structure that is already on site and has relatively good bones. We're just not totally demolishing everything. Let's leave something that is good and that may have future potential use That does not negatively impact the project or the site. It's just a very good opportunity that we want to Give to you.
So relatively speaking, relative good bones means good bones? Like, it, it's, there's no I don't know that building well enough in terms of how old it is, what the structure is looking like. Sixty-seven?
That section is one of the newer sections.
It's young.
Yeah, I've worked. Yeah, but that section is a new
That's.
Portion. So I don't think that that date is correct because that's, that's a new. Yeah, that's not part of the original building. So we can get a date if you'd like to find out.
Understand really like if we're doing everything new. You know, to have something that, I'm sure as part of the design, it would end up looking really New and as part of the total design, right? In Things like that. So I, I just want to make sure it doesn't look like it was something from the past Relative to everything being, you know, being fresh.
But again, I think that's kind of going a little too far in the future.
For the future.
Right? So that would be For a different building committee to determine what they wanted the future of that building to look like. So this is, this is saving this portion of I'm just talking right over you. This is saving this portion of the building because Originally the thought is you, we build this beautiful facility and we have no fieldhouse. I use that term loosely. We have no space for our athletes to, to meet. We have no bathrooms for the, you know, the visiting players, whatever. So this is just And then it would be like, oh, let's build a You know, ten thousand square foot fieldhouse. It's like, well, why rebuild something when you already have a, have a The bones of a facility that can then be updated and upgraded and, and brought into the, into the future. That makes sense.
Okay, okay. So I think that kind of answers one of my questions, but I, I will ask it anyway, the With the budget we have at the moment for this, this part of the project. Do we get It, do we get anything for that as far as Like what we talked about, the potential weight room, potential, you know, fieldhouse kind of facility? Is that Something that can be part of the budget as it exists, or that's something that would have to come later? And with funding from some source, whether that's from the overall bond or that's from a different source?
So it, it would be irresponsible for me to say yes or no right now because we are still developing the concepts for Curtis Corner. We, we know that this building is being demolished. That has already been factored into the budget. What we're, what has happened is that we recognize there's a portion of the building that we could retain to give you the most flexibility in the future. What that looks like to Your point, how much that costs, we don't know yet. Can be factored into some of the future estimating that we're going to be doing on Curtis Corner. But I suspect that any major improvements to the building that we are going to keep Is going to have to be from additional funding sources.
Okay.
But that's my opinion today. I don't know the amounts. But as this process continues over the next six months, we will be able to answer those questions.
Okay. And then I had another question regarding the amount of building you're talking about demolishing versus keeping. Could that Go up or down as the design is more finalized or is this kind of?
Not likely. This is really it. There are very good start and stop points here. We would not recommend going farther. And to go less, you would be missing an opportunity. And to go less, you would be missing an opportunity to grab some real estate per square footage that is relatively inexpensive to retain.
Okay. And so they asked tonight is really to be able to submit this schematic design to ride as this is what we're planning for this um, property.
Correct. For demolition only. Demolition of the building only. I will be back many more times to talk about the total site.
Got it.
Okay, just a, just two, two more things.
One, I assume while demolition's occurring, we lose the parking in front of the current school? Or do you think some of that is retained? Or is that too far ahead?
Uh, that may be too far ahead. We will certainly talk to contractors about the logistics associated with demolishing this building. Um, I'm not I don't know why we would.
Yeah.
Yeah, we may not want to park there while we're demolishing the building. I guess that's what I'm saying. That site may be partially closed like we have done here at the high school. So there's a lot of logistics that went into what's happening here. There will be just as many that go into this project here.
It's, it's pretty heavily used on the weekends for, because of the proxement, proximity of the bike path. So I, I guess, I would assume people aren't going to want to be there while you're demolishing a building, but if if the building's getting demolished in February and that parking lot's gone until the project's done. That's a, something we should let people know.
And it's a very good point that we will, it's these items that we discuss at this School Building Committee and we will do so.
And just at a kind of curiosity, is everything we're looking at here that's in this Pentagon sort of, um, is that all school facilities? There's a little, there's a little fuzziness in that park of what school, what's town, at least in my head. So is everything here, a, a, the tennis courts, the, all the other pieces, parking and everything, is that all maintained and under the control of the schools? Or is that a little fuzzy?
Yeah, the town helps us, our school department maintain all of that. So i- it is, it is fuzzy. I'm curious, is so like what, what the question behind that? Like what? Yep.
Well, I, there was a version of the plan early on where we moved the tennis courts and so, and I'm just wondering, is that is that our, are those the town's tennis courts? Are those ours? There's sort of fuzzy here about more courts or those?
So they.
Is that ours? Is that theirs?
They will be moved. And I mean, I, I think if this is what they're looking at, the the road goes through the existing tennis courts and stuff, so.
That, again, n- not a defined plan, like.
No, I, I, I know, but I, I think.
Like, right now, those tennis courts are not moving.
Correct. The, the concept right now is that the tennis courts would remain. We are creating other areas for future courts, maybe, but this is just a concept. So.
I just wasn't sure if those are our courts or those are the town courts or a little bit of both. I don't know.
I think all of our courts are town courts, so. Think? Like Broad Rock, I think. Yeah, I mean.
Broad Rock was just redone and I don't think we did that.
Yeah, so uh, my understanding is all of our it's all mixed. So.
I, I do want to bring it back to the demolition of the orange part. So we will have people right near there because of our administration building. So, and I, and it's a very old building, at least parts of it, so we know there's a lot of potential for hazardous material, whatnot. So can people safely work in such proximity to the building while it's being demolished?
Uh, absolutely. And let me remind you that you will have a fully occupied high school when we are demolishing your existing high school. So there is a lot of logistics and planning that go into the actua execution of the work. Safety is paramount. All of the hazardous abatement is done before the building is demolished, so that we are not creating airborne hazards, et cetera. You, you will, you will see a preview because this building will come down before the high school comes down. Um, but I can assure you, as we go through the process, it will be absolutely safe for the administration to stay um, in close proximity to the building. And there will be just as many precautions as you see here, there.
Thank you. That's great. Um, and just to reiterate, the demolition costs are also reimbursable?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
So, and we're starting that in February. So that's great, because then we can get that reimbursement sooner rather than later. Very good.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to submit the schematic design, schematic design to ride for the partial demolition first quarter middle school.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Hi.
That motion passes. Thank you so much for being here and answering our questions.
Thank you, Mr. Conti.
All right, that will bring us to uh, School Committee Business B, uh, Discussion Action Bylaws Revision First Read. I'm going to turn that over to the superintendent to present this um, document.
Certainly. So, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, before you, you have a, a redlined version uh, based off of the conversations that were held, uh, both at our last meeting as well as the annual summer meeting. Essentially, uh, if we trying to work in different, but my apologies for, for but I wanted to make, for not having it highlighted as well as, uh, potentially we could if we were all working electronically or as we worked electronically. But I wanted to make sure that, um, we were looking at the entire section where that, and that you had an opportunity to make sure that the, the proposals that you put forward are, are in alignment with both the preceding and following sections. Um, so every change that has been proposed is highlighted in red and the existing um, the existing language has been crossed out. Some, uh, may be able to read. Um, if you are unable to read it, you can, uh, take out an existing copy of our bylaws and the, uh, no paragraph changes or formatting changes were made. So all proposed change, changes as consensus was reached um, in those aforementioned meetings are listed in red, um, either as addition, uh, with a cross out or if it was just additional, uh, text, those, you will see just the red text and no cross out. Um, I believe they begin on page three uh, for Article Four, Organization. In Section Four on page three. Uh, the main change here or the gist of the change was that, uh, at that first meeting of the year, uh, I, I believe it, uh, we may have used language from the town charter where it talked about the designated town clerk. Um, so here we would put at the organizational meeting, the consensus was around the superintendent or designee. The superintendent is unavailable, shall call the meeting to order, open the meeting and then accept nominations for committee members for the role of Chair and Vice Clerk, uh, and Clerk Vice Chair. Um, I'm not sure.
Can, can I just, can I make a, make a suggest? We've, yeah, we spent two meetings on reviewing this and I put, and had gotten, I don't think we need to.
Yeah.
I don't feel like I need to review every change. But I'll make a motion to, or we, we're not making a motion now. It's just first reading.
First read.
So I.
No, I, I think that's a great idea and, and, and um, to be efficient. Um, why don't we just ask if anybody sees, we did have a chance to review it, I, hopefully earlier today. So if anybody saw something that needed to be added or had a question about, um, then we can just go right to anybody's questions.
I, I really just had a couple clerical things that I, I noticed, um, in the last page, uh, the, the two things in the last page, actually. Under Annual Practices, it says, um, we crossed out Retreat Planning and now it says Summer Workshop. I probably should keep that verb of planning in there, so it should, should be Summer Workshop Planning. Uh, just to make it clear, that's what our annual practice is. Um, or, or not, I don't know, maybe, last page. And then I noticed in the revisions, we didn't have the latest revision from twenty twenty-two and looks like there might be some others missing in there. So just want to make sure we're up to date on the number of times it's been revised. And the dates on when that happened.
All right. So we'll note, note that for our, when we do our second reading. Anybody else? Michelle?
Um, I'm sorry, Ms. Better. I have a couple of questions and, um, I think a large part of my questions are as a result of my not being able to be here at the last meeting, but um, so I, I wonder if, um, the, um, if the subcommittees wo- oh, was there any discussion at the last meeting about the subcommittees being, um, like standing subcommittees being listed in the bylaws or not? Um, that's, I'm just throwing that out there. Um, because there are some of our subcommittees that are going to, uh, probably exist in perpetuity. Um, my next question is the, um, the, uh, section five point five, um, on the remuneration, I can never say that word, um. Are we still going to maintain our membership in the Rhode Island Association of School Committees?
We have every intention to, um.
Okay, I, I don't know if that actually needs to be in the, in the bylaws, but I know that's, I know, like some districts have withdrawn from, from the Rhode Island Association of School Committees. Um, we have, uh, I think this, there was just one other thing that I had. I, I like the fact that we're not going on a, a religious retreat or a, um, summer vacation. Um, I, I, I think that's a, a good idea. Um, the, the piece that says we're going to schedule our meetings, um, after four P M. Are we gonna lay it on a a time and like have our meetings start at the same time? Or is it going to vary?
So we wanted flexibility. For instance, we didn't have an executive session tonight, so we could have started at six thirty. But our bylaws say start at seven. So just to give flexibility to be able to start a little earlier if we don't have an executive session. Or, you know, if for some reason, it's just more convenient to start at a later time for somebody at some future committee. Um, it's just, it's just for flexibility, not to have a specific time. That's what our thinking was.
Actually, thank you for bringing that portion of it, because I do notice another thing we're missing here is that in that same section, it says the regular business meeting of the committee shall generally be held on the second Tuesday of each month. Uh, in the following section, we're removing, mentioned the fourth Tuesday, but without removal, we're we did not add the fourth Tuesday into the regular meetings text. So I think we need to add that if we plan to meet both on the second Tuesday and the fourth Tuesday of each month. Uh, I, we need to add that second and fourth, I think just the language and fourth. Um, and say regular business meetings of the committee shall generally be held on the second and fourth Tuesday of each month.
That's a great catch. Yes, we would definitely need to add that to the second Tuesday and the fourth Tuesday. Okay. That's something we can add.
Thank you for, um.
Yep. Um, very helpful. Anybody else see anything or have a question? All right. Well, that will be our first reading. We will make those changes um, when we bring it back in two weeks for our second reading. Right. And that will bring us to Discussion School Building Committee Update. So let's thank you, Kate.
This has been a very exciting first week of school. Um, we, as everybody has seen out there, we finally have our fence is complete, all the scrim of that, um, black fabric is up except for the areas where we have the gates. If you go down, um, School Street, you'll see two big blocks that are not, they don't have scrim and that, those are the gates that the heavy equipment trucks move in and out of and, but those will be closed at all times clearly, except for when trucks are moving in and outs. Um, we had our town council meeting last night where an update was given. Um, it was a very uneventful town council meeting. It was very quick, um, basic update, um, which it, well, my part, I was out of there in fifteen minutes. Not a question was asked of the project team, which I thought was interesting and had never happened before. Um, so it was basically these past few weeks since our last update has been really just the logistics of the first day of school. Making sure all our site enabling, um, has been taken care of and it all has. As, as we saw when we pulled in the parking lot ourselves, this pathway in here is our parent drop off. Um, there was some refinement over the, um, past over the first three days of school and then the past two days of school of the, of the traffic, uh, the bus flow and the parent drop off and and student parking, things of that nature, but that happens every year. So nothing out of the ordinary. And there was just some tweaks that have been made. Um, I'm going to cough, so excuse me. And the only thing we have left is as you pull in this parking lot, you'll notice there are three big poles and, um, I'm gonna, I have a situation, I'll do it and say. That's all. Um, so you'll notice the three, um, Rhode Island Energy poles. Um, we're waiting for Rhode Island Energy to hook up, um, to do finalize their hookups. Um, that's going to, we were hoping to have it before the first day of school, but clearly it did not happen. Um, so once it is coordinated, it will be done out of school hours. But for the most part, up until this point, really all the updates are around, um, enablement for getting the site prepped, ready for the diggers to start digging. They have started to move trees and brush from the site out here. Um, and honestly, really site work has begun. So they're gonna start removing the dirt, emptying this field so that they can start, um, working towards foundation. Um, and, and things of that nature. Permits have all been, have all been, um, gathered. Um, we're just basically ready to go and start the work. Um, we will have the official groundbreaking ceremony on Saturday, October fourth at ten A M. over here. However, it's a, that's a ceremonial piece. Um, there will be site work that will get started ahead of time in the next couple of weeks, so. Pretty exciting time. Um, if anybody has a specific question, um, I'm happy to, I'm happy to try and answer it. But for the most part, there's not much, there aren't many updates from the last time outside of what Phil just presented just now.
So I got a couple of questions. Um, I had asked, I think, I think it was the gentleman from Gilbane, um, at one of our presentations about getting signage up that would have a rendering of the building and like a completion date or, I mean, you know, what the signs, um, just to kind of build excitement within the community. So when you drive by, you're like, okay, yeah, it's a construction site, but you got a big sign that shows this is what it's gonna look like.
All that's coming.
Okay, because that would be great.
Yes.
And then I do watch the, I've got a lot of extraneous time on my hands because I watch all these meetings. But I did watch the School Building Committee meeting and, um, I, I, Dave had a very good idea about a beam in the high school for the kids to sign. And I was thinking it would be great to have one at the middle school too, because those eighth grader, seventh And I was thinking it would be great to have one at the middle school too, because those eighth graders, seventh graders. They're going to be in the high school when it opens, right? So if you're going to put one in the high school, which I think would be fabulous. Could we get one in the middle school for those kiddos to also sign?
So I think what it would be, it would be the same beam because it's going to go up in the school. And, um, I think it would be a matter of inviting those middle school kids. Gilbane actually, um, in talking with Mark He, they do that regularly. They do almost for every building. And so they'll help us coordinate that as far as invitations and who to include and it, your point taken that the kids who. I mean, we may even, we could expand it to, to even lower grades, like the kids who are going to grad, be the first graduating class, you know, that kind of thing. And, or the first freshman class and whatever it is, um, but we can make sure that we take all of that into account.
I just think it'd be great to have something like inside the school itself that the kids would walk by and be like, oh yeah. I'm going to be in that school in two years or, you know, just to bring it down to the middle school. I mean, these, the kids in this building, they're going to be driving in, walking by a construction site. They're going to see it. They're going to be like. Oh my gosh, you know, the foundation's poured and they're going to see it every step. I'm just thinking, what can we do to bring that excitement to the middle?
I see what you're saying. Um, so it wouldn't necessarily have to be a beam, but something, um, that gives an update. I mean, it could be like a little. You know, like pick, uh, a display, a picture showcase or maybe, maybe, um. Like one of our flat screens that kind of give like, this is where we are today. And then in a couple of weeks, you up to something like.
Yeah, that'd be exciting. Um, yeah, just maybe take it back to the committee and, and think about, I love the idea of the beam though. Um, and I like your idea of having kiddos of all ages sign it. Um, so. Yeah, whatever we can do to build excitement at, at all grade levels, I think it'd be great.
I think it, it all starts with that groundbreaking ceremony. I want to make sure that it, it's very clear that. It is a, it is for the, our community. It is a public ceremony of groundbreaking. Yes, there are pockets of our community who might not be celebrating. Um, but the majority of our community. Most of our abudders, I've had many phone calls with many of these folks. While there are going to be sacrifices that our immediate, uh, radius. Um, are going to have to take, uh, make over these next couple of years. The majority are willing and happy and supportive and they've been our biggest allies. We work closely with them to make sure we're not overstepping our good neighbor boundaries. Um, and so I think it's important to, um, yes, for the elected officials who have been part of it. And yes, for the legislators who made the money available and, you know, the decision makers who have, you know. Put the red tape for us to cut through, but it's more than that for our community. It's, it's been. An entire decade of lift, blood, sweat and tears from many folks. Um, couple of us sitting in the room, um, couple of us thereby, um. Many of our students are, you know, they've lived it. I know I can just speak in my household. My family's lived it for ten years. So. Um, I, I just want to really kind of double down on how important it is that this. Um, groundbreaking ceremony is not just for the, excuse my, my terminology, like us talking heads. And, and us elected officials, it's for this community to celebrate, like this is happening and this is exciting. And, um, and it, it just, it's a really impressive, um, place we've gotten to. So I just want to make sure people understand it is a public ceremony. It's not just for, just for us folk.
So will that be like put out there to the community and, you know, like advertised in some way, shape or form? So people know that, you know, come by and help us celebrate.
Yep.
Thank you, Kate, for the update. All right. Um, so now we want to talk about the date for our next school committee meeting. Um, we wanted to be mindful of, um. Of, of the Jewish holiday and for, um, you know, we'd be willing to move the. The meeting, if, if, if we need to, um, I, I want to make sure that we extend that, uh, to. Stuart, because we want to make sure that he's available and can attend, um, the next meeting. So, um. So. And I, I don't have it in front of me, but it, it, is it young Kippur that's on Tuesday?
It's the new year.
It's Rosh Hashanah. Okay. Thank you. Um, so yes, so. We want to be mindful of the holiday and if it, um. I want to make sure we have a quorum though, if we choose to move it to the, the following Wednesday. So I want to get everybody's input on that.
I think, but just clarify, by Wednesday you mean the twenty fourth, because the next scheduled Tuesday for us would be the twenty third. And so the, the ask is to move the next meeting to the twenty fourth. Um, so yeah.
The Jewish New Year is actually Tuesday and Wednesday.
That's, that's kind of what I was thinking. So that, uh, I was, uh, maybe the Thursday would have to be.
So.
Yeah, that works.
So Thursday, the twenty fifth.
So, uh, just depending on the time, uh, that is the, um, Mattoonik Open House. And I will be attending.
And then Stuart can't be there the twenty fifth.
The twenty fifth.
Wait, well, what about Monday? How does Monday work?
I'm sorry. I do, yeah, I do have, yeah, something already on the twenty fifth. The, the one thing that I would say is that, um, or someone had put to my attention is that in terms of, um. October, the, we, we don't get to the second Tuesday until the fourteenth. So potentially the thirtieth of September would still give us a week or two weeks before the next meeting.
I'd be in favor of the thirtieth, keep it down on a Tuesday, just moving it from the fourth to the fifth Tuesday of the month. Makes it more, keeps it more in line with what we are, our typical practice is.
No, that's great. That's a great suggestion. So Stuart, does that work for your calendar?
So I, I have a, so I have a question. So. With all due respect to the holiday, do we, is, is it something that we should be working to move? And is the thirtieth, okay?
Yes, and yes.
Okay.
And I started a particular job up in Connecticut on the thirtieth. Is that a Tuesday?
That is the Tuesday.
So. I will be here. I'll be driving back. I might be a little late, but I will, if, but I will be here. Yes, the thirtieth works. And I really, I just want to say, I, I very much appreciate the flexibility of the committee. Uh, to work within not just mine, but of the communities. You know, work. I, I know the twenty fifth, they would be able to make it, but I couldn't. And so thank you. Yeah.
I was just wondering from a point of order, do we need to have a motion around that or is, or can we just, is it consensus? You can make a motion on that. It is down for discussion and action. So it's, it's up to the committee. I, I think a motion would be appropriate.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think since we put out, um, our full calendar, um, to the community, I think it'd be best to have a motion to move it to the thirtieth.
So Ms. Vetter, I am sure that the thirtieth is fine with me, but my calendar is in my car. So, um. I'll make a motion to, um. Make our next school committee meeting on Tuesday, September thirtieth.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. So.
Make a motion to adjourn before eight twenty?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We're adjourned at eight fifteen.